Good evening, this is the pleasure of the audience this evening from 249 St. James's, West Duffer, Chris Sedega and Kevin Ross. Good evening, this is the pleasure of the audience this evening of young freshmen from Hillsborough who are Michael May Woinian. This is all the freshmen. Good evening, this is the pleasure of the audience and the invitation is Pastor Jonathan Godel, Godel, who is the pastor of Hillsborough Procreation Church. He has casted several churches in the Boston area and has been at Hillsborough Procreation Church for the past 15 years. He honors the spirit of team within the town, local businesses, residents and area churches and the Newhouse Kingdom of City Street by Agatha and William Reverend Godel. Good evening, gentlemen. We pause before our worship this evening to remember several things. Remember that things that we all actually gift, they come from your hand and they are released by your love. Remember that human respect is quite precious. Use the toward, the limited care, the ability and compassion. Remember that parents give them their justice and the confidence, and justice create a community that our children can live in and raise their children in. We pause for men and women servants, those who labor, serve as teachers, firefighters, policemen, men and women servants who seek the good of the future as a leader. We pause for all those whose lives have been stolen by accidents, injury or loss. And we pause for those who are looking for help and assistance. Ask that all of our parts will be tended to the needs of those. Tonight, all of us gathered to create a greater community service, wish to the whole. You name your love and your justice and ask that our efforts to those ends will be our burden, our character, to a spirit of pure light and peace for our minds, our hearts and our lives. Let's take one minute to remember all the towns and boys who passed away in 2014. John Pabiel, firefighter, Mary Rossley, teacher. Frank Tomralski, custodian. Hennessy Gilbert, custodian. Francis Groome, conservation commissioner. Oyamai, deputy district chief. Robert O'Pocky, custodian. Global Medica Economic Development Task Force. George Youngboom, head of the Department of Energy. Daniel Ryan, teacher. Doris Ostrom, nurse. Roy Patterson, director of Cross Recreation. Joseph Price, custodian. Anthony Romano, principal. Richard Shannon, teacher. Sheila Walsh, teacher. Rose White, teacher. Take a moment to remember those people. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, chairman of the community board of directors, has one announcement.
Yes, good evening and welcome to the town meeting. The announcement I have to see follows Reverend Godel's comments. This Saturday, May 9th, is the annual U.S. Letter Carriers Food Drive here in Tuxbury. Those of you who have been in the can or is non-commercial food products, buying new boxes, letter carriers will pick them up and bring them down for the benefit of the Tuxbury Community Pantry. And I ask that you try to keep those to 90 pounds a week, support roughly 250 households in every town. And this drive on Saturday last year meant the pantry roughly 23,000 pounds of food, approximately four months of distribution. So we ask that you step up one more time and help those in need here in town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have one announcement as well. Through this meeting today, on the 4th of May, the 25th, at 8:00 AM at the Hillsborough Community Club, where we have a 5K online. The money raised from this online will be used in support of local charities. The first charity which you all are familiar with, it's the Nile Island Memorial Clinic. The second charity which may not be familiar with, is Strong Water Fund. Strong Water Fund provides a questioning circuitous for Indian people and for veterans suffering from diabetes. It's a great organization and they do an outstanding job. They have developed a local relationship with the B.A.N. Hospital out of Bedford and most recently are working with the local government as well. We hope you'll be considerate of participating or if not, just call in online at hillsboroughcc.com and make any small contribution. Thank you very much. In the town meeting, it is divided into three parts. The first part was our own accomplishment, that was the election on April 11th of this year. Tonight is part two, which we will be addressing budget issues. And on Wednesday night, Saturday at 8 o'clock, we will be addressing a program for the financial issues. So tonight, we're focusing on the budget. Now, before this time, there was a deal about, hopefully everybody has, is four script errors. If anybody has any, there was no objection, you put it that way. I'm going to take these as script errors and I'm going to give them to you right now and get this out the way. Article 10, under the capital of Ossman Church, F by 16, recommend 225,300, should be 235,000 even. And that deficit, deficit surplus after capital should be 33,081 instead of 32971. That's Article 10. Article 80, the leading form of words on the second line after the town management, from water management to waste on routine earnings. The third script error is Article 21, within the motion, the seventh is something announced should be 13,100,000 even instead of 13,100,100 dollars. And the final script error is Article 44, section A630, instead of being M or E, it should be B or E. I want to accept those as script errors. Mr. President, what do I?
Mr. Moderator has mentioned that on section 1 has been accomplished, so the funding is immediately on section 2, which is a job of Article 2. Is there any discussion on Article 2? First, Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion to waive the review of the articles. We have a motion to not make the articles. I have a motion to not make the articles. All those who favor this, the paper say no.
Aye.
All those opposed, we will not make the articles. Mr. Moderator, we find it to be reasonable to adopt that.
I have a motion to adopt Article 2, is there any discussion? Any one rise you? I'll take this under my scope. All those who favor Article 2, the paper say no.
Aye.
All those opposed, in the scope.
Mr. Moderator, we find it to be reasonable to adopt Article 3, 3 does number 2, 3 does number 3, 3 does number 4 and 3 does number 5.
Each of the consent account articles, 32 is the annual report, 33 is the authorized patient purchase, 34 is, except, authorized seven nine funds and 35 is the authorized revolving accounts. If anyone you have a right to discuss any of these articles? They go to rising, I'll take a vote on all of these articles. All those who are in favor of the second, the consent account articles, the paper say no.
Aye.
All those opposed, in the scope.
Mr. Moderator, we find it to be reasonable to adopt Article 4.
Thank you, sir. Over the floor here, before we move on to the next article, I will release the category. If you were to debate that yet, or if you please follow the debate. If not, we will continue on to the next article. But to complete, I will go over the articles that anyone wishes to debate. And then we will vote on the ones that they were so taken on and then we will debate each article that's designated. General Governor, Finance Department, Women's Services, Council on Aging, Facilities, I.D.R., Training and Development, Public Safety, Blue Room, E.P.W., Underpass, by the President. Okay, at this point, I only have one, I'm done with the debate, please go to your own part of the house, but I'd like to know if you have a question to debate. Okay. We're going to get a tally of a few women and then vote on the articles that they would read.
Charlie, I'm going to make your streamer, question about the health insurance.
What's, what's that, hold on a second.
Oh.
We're giving, one of the lines to you, who has not been debated on the panel discussion.
Okay. One second, Howard.
William, sir, where are you going? Okay, William, we're just wondering if you want to discuss?
I just wanted to have a question about the health insurance.
Are you under the last assignment, brother? Okay, William.
We've got a change in the health insurance program, we're supposed to be saving somebody. I just look at the school, we can count on the same three years, it's getting involved. That's one from 14 to 16. I was just wondering, we just look at the 95, 95, 96, 95, that's a million man, we look at the school. I was just wondering, what is he, how's the program going?
Mr. Moderator? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Actually, the programs don't look good at all, especially the games, I don't see any news. Tom, the hospital, the town, the school, the insurance, it's approximately 640,000 dollars. We did make change to 70, now I save the town a little bit, 800,000 dollars. I will come over from there. F by 16 will see a quick side increase in all the health care premiums. It's going to be a little over 9% increase in medicine, which is far as I raised. And on sale, there's an increase for identity. Global Health, it is greatest, the health insurance, however, the rest of the people.
Yeah, the law, that is, self, self insured, we have a gas problem that, we're going.
Yeah, self insured, we've been self insured for many years. We have a health trust fund with a few million dollars in fund, to assist many major claims. And because of the self insurance, the cost to take, does the way we begin to plan, through crossing, and healthy, and self, it's getting redundant.
There are a lot of capitals, there are a lot of issues, we're going to use some more funds for the Boston area.
The National Health Trust, we like to keep two to three months of claims in there based on the problems. I got to the trust case tonight, which is creating new facility, we're waiting for it. Any other discussion? I have anything to do with vote on the full budget, which arranges right is 95,407,336, that's the rest of them. All those who favor the President, the paper say no.
Aye.
All those opposed, in the scope. Mr. President, what do I?
Mr. Moderator, we find it to be reasonable to adopt Article 5, that's amended, as we understand it's amended.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Really, the cycle seeks to raise appropriate 101,754 dollars to fund the first year of collective hiring of new members. It's meant to increase the trust association in the town. Raise the contract salary increases about 25% a year, it would change the longevity over the three year period, increasing the longevity steps for five and 10 year employees. Quarter percent for 15, 20, 25 year employees, half percent in the third year, 35 year employees. The cost of the contract in seven year, say 7,675 dollars, in eight year, 2,280 dollars per year, for three year cost of 278,650 dollars. Thank you. Any other discussion? Here and then, we have a motion to the FinCEN to relax. As amended, all those who favor 1,754 dollars, the paper say no. All those opposed, in the scope. Mr. President, what do I?
Mr. Moderator, we find it to be reasonable to adopt Article 6, as amended.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. The number seeks to raise appropriate 46,412 dollars and need to fund the collective hiring in the town to start a place to allow the security of their offices in July of 2015. Once again, terms of the agreement, the settlement, the largest outline for ways to create a contract, 25% salary increases each three years. And changes to longevity for various steps each three years. Second, the contract will cost 51,800 per year dollars, and third year contract 47,540 dollars, the total year cost of 145,790 dollars. Okay, we have a motion from FinCEN regarding 46,400 dollars. Any further discussion? Any one rise you? All those who favor the article as amended of 46,400 dollars, the paper say no. All those opposed, in the scope. Mr. President, what do I?
Mr. Moderator, we find it to be reasonable to adopt Article 7, we're starting to read the draft.
Mr. Moderator, I asked about 7, we're talking. Article 7 is paying the funds, so I have to take a vote on it. All those who favor Article 7, the thing with funds, the paper say no. All those opposed, in the scope.
Mr. Moderator, we find it to be reasonable to adopt, I believe, as amended, the term, because I can't.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I believe this is the time of vote to raise appropriate 8,738 dollars, need to fund the collective hiring in the town and locally in the riverbed. American Federation State County, Mr. Oates, A.F.L.C.I.O., Aspen, in July of 2015. The cycle is elected by an area between town and Aspen, and there's been a very long three year contract term. Contract essentially to two halves, salary increase, reach the three years, deliver the financial evidence. The projected cost of the second year contract is 8,680 dollars. Projected third year contract is 8,4747 dollars. Total cost of the three years is 248,160 dollars. Thank you, sir. There are also the finances we made to adopt, anyone else who wants to discuss? Any one who rise you? The article as amended for the spring of 2016, 8,738 dollars, all those who favor, the paper say no. All those opposed, in the scope.
Mr. Moderator, we find it to be reasonable to adopt, I believe, as appropriate, 537,648 dollars to the first.
Any discussion? I have one. Yes, sir.
For you to come here, just so you should be tried, the paper is, I don't know if that's, I couldn't pick it up, I don't know if it's there.
May I, Mr. Moderator, that was a provided supplement of information in that page. Three, there is a breakdown of the water tank areas that are expected to be quarries at this time of year tonight, and the balance of the stock of the tank areas have proved the odds are proven to be, well, that will not compete. The water tank areas, there was a one way loan of 49,531 tank areas. Now, the quarries have spent 400,000 this evening. If that's true, the balance then would be 1,400,000 for contract.
One more question, there's a basic configuration of the rates, is that still here on a certain level, I was about to go. Gallows, okay, but I have a little question, I mean, is that a formula, like, what do you call it, something like that?
Yes, based on my understanding question. And certainly, I'm going to be honest with you, the hunt, the younger, the youngest, on what we do, we create issues. Many of the policies that came with sewer, twice on the town, twice on the tank areas. Sewer or tank areas, fully, 690,000, 590,000, we're required to spend 120,000 on this set. If that's true, it's not even on a net, a balance of 4,570,000.
You guys agree to, production for, the foundation, collections and money transfer back, the enterprise fund. The amount, right now, is the elder tank areas, we have a fair amount. Have the improvements over the next five years, we have to improve them, the loads, and also more funds to do those projects, and to change that. Yeah, also, they've been deciding a lot of the way as well as the project. Yeah, we should agree to our usage. Uh, I have said the law based on usage, which is extended contract law. Of the second place to actually use it. What just yesterday?
Yeah, it's actually the government based on the actual use for it. It's just me.
Here we have a motion from the Fed Bank to adopt the several. Any other discussion? Any other questions? We will now vote the article, uh, through. By the nine hundred and seven, six forty-eight, the sooner by some. That right, so, oh. By the nine hundred and seven, six forty-eight, sooner by some. All those who favor please give us a say no. All those opposed? Any other support? I will end.
Mr. Honorable, the finance committee moves to adopt article ten, raising appropriate six hundred and one hundred and ten thousand five hundred and five dollars for the borough city.
Any discussion? Just as a reminder, we do have an amendment, uh, one second, uh, excuse me. A script is error on this particular item. It was the two thousand, two hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred, which should be two hundred and thirty-five thousand even. And capital should be three hundred and thirty thousand oh eight one instead of three two nine seven. As a reminder, the script is error. And all those, anybody else opposed to discuss this? No? And take a vote. We have a motion from the Fed Bank to adopt. Sixteen one hundred and ten thousand five hundred five. All those who favor our amendment, please give us a say no. All those opposed? Any other support? I will.
Mr. Honorable, the finance committee moves to adopt transfer one hundred and seventy thousand five hundred from civilization fund to the borough city.
Name the investment, the record, please, sir. J. Kelly, twenty-two, Kelly, wait. Yes, sir.
Mr. Honorable, last year was a couple of hours. And we do have a time we can take and money from the state protection fund to the right. Fund already expressed. This is just as bad idea, but how better as it is that our family would just truly happen. It was such a proposition to last year. And it was a hope this would be correct and would be happening again. But several hours of this meeting and totally non-competitive, you know, the state protection fund increased from last year's about nine hundred thousand dollars. The issue is one hundred and sixty million dollars. We're better than the pressure of this and get out of this stuff. Overall, this is just about one percent, nine hundred and sixty percent of the total budget. Uh, if we keep this money in civilization fund, where it belongs, it will cause not much of a problem with any of the the bonds and the warrants. You are the authority. So we're very emotional, the, uh, emotions are the best of the best. Thank you.
Welcome here with three grand and grand. I'm not going to speak much on this, just sort of kind of powerful as I said. When I was reading this document home, I saw a request of twenty-five thousand dollars in the longer version. While I was, the farmer's smart, the town man, they go with the longer cable. It goes in every question. And the town man is a moved out person in the neighborhood. Now that's the town man is right out, but I don't know, that's the town man's, uh, right for this. Apparently, you guys don't have it. So I guess the twenty-five thousand, I don't have it. For some of these hours, I've lost a lot of money. And it's time we stop this. State posts and bits like air, three thirty, and, uh, ask associate from, uh, all of these things that go. I think something more of this way, two years from now, Martin, the area, Mr. Guy, exactly, see with the money handle. And you got a big day before that, this is very extreme, I will fall away. You could take all of these things, whether in their proper ways, in any of their proper ways. And then, and you can say, we do, they don't have to be raised, promise they will, they will fund, show the falls, and then we have to change them. Simple, daily, cheap, and we can all see that. Thank you for listening today.
Don't go along on the road. I stand in support of withdrawal of the cycle. I afford you the stabilization fund for budgetary purposes. Stabilization fund should be used with great guidance from the finance committee. I would hope that the finance committee will look into using after use of the stabilization fund. I don't see anywhere in this session, Tommy, where the stabilization fund is used to stabilize the cash flow. And I support withdrawal of the stabilization.
Ladies and gentlemen, the driver's test issued for our further speed. The press once said, uh, the second speed was absolutely right. The line already is the most smart in town, I guess, so we'll be happy about that. I will find those ideas in the hour is eleven fourteen. A lot of them again, budget request of the odds. While we face this, as a funding for fund, those ideas are presented. And I felt a miracle of ideas going forward and give town meeting, you know, to vote on whether they should be funded or not. Same condition on service workers, fund one-time expenditures within the capital size or within the money. The others to address urgency situations that the town faces when finding this in the county. Not just eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, all of the stabilization fund elements address one-time expenditures that was not able to fund the budget. I ask town meeting to approve out of the letter, defeat indefinitely, fund allowing stabilization fund to be used tonight. And be as it presented to ensure that the bodies have proper funding to carry what they need to to our services.
Excuse me, anyone? Yes, sir. You just told it, he asked.
I don't know, I just, um, remember. Any other questions? Article seven, sorry, talking about, it's very interesting. Um, here it's, this part of that was, um, seventy, you're trying to rule this only. So are these?
Yes, yes, please. Thank you. Okay. Is it possible that all those certain items are supposed to are? We have to vote on each one in this. Uh, on this one, as you called, uh, like four different items on that? Five different items, excuse me. This one has five different items, so now. This, that's the same thing we have to vote on on, uh, the one hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred.
Uh, Mr. Honorable, just trying to help, resident. Uh, the words that we have to run would make a motion to stop only down item, which Mr. Kelly specifically mentioned, if he still will deny. I actually want him to stop that, I'm wondering why. But I want the town man to stop doing this, and apparently, Mr. Kelly's found the only way to stop the vote. I'll make a motion on behalf of this section to reduce the authority, twenty-five thousand dollars, and I'll let them run. Clean the rest of it again. Amendment. Okay. I'll make myself a cake and shake the shadow of the day.
Why don't, why don't you tell us together what you'd like to make?
Maybe just lots of makes sense to prepare a roof, otherwise the building is going to grow, so I'm just going to keep the scene center roof prepared for vote on the rest.
Now, what's the motion you would like to make?
You vote on this case center roof prepared and and postpone the rest fair.
Are you willing to fund the scene center roof, you know, with twenty-five hundred dollars?
Right.
All right, we need something to write for that. You can write that down and give it to the chairman tomorrow. Yes, sir.
I'm afraid we didn't express my interest in question. Or can we see it all closer, like that, that's a one in here? More importantly, station, the motions are, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is that any, uh, a state? Well, uh, will it still be used as a bargaining tool, if the state, if it's not demolished, it can be retained?
Our guys, uh, the station, the devil should be town. Has received authority to sell the castle without, whatever, the town should be, uh, escape. If we sell it, it's the proceeds of the sale become, these, these funds are sent to the large building, it gets cyclor to approve the, um, or the, um, castle.
Anyone else?
Because of both, I mean, personnel is waiting across the room. Um, in addition to the investigation, of course, I'm also service the chair or the economic development committee. And one of the main complaints that we offer here are that the whole these stations. These funds are required to do that work, and I believe all of these by, uh, I was following that category that's not attributed as funds, not funds. I raised to against that and 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 support the article last year.
Okay, we have, uh, a motion from the gentleman. But the forty-five hundred, we also have a motion for indefinite postponement, and we also have a motion to adopt. So I'm going to check the indefinite postponement first. We have a motion for indefinite postponement of our, uh, this is. Um. The definite postponement is a negative action. It's intent is to the TTR vote, and it requires the majority vote to prevail. If you wish to the TTR vote in favor of the definite postponement. If you wish to vote on the adoption of the order, or vote in opposition to the definite postponement. I'm going to try this on the first vote first, and we'll see how that goes. All those who take over the definite.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, it strikes me, how do you vote on definitely postponement now? If these amendments are made, they have to mount there. This gentleman here, if you leave him, he go for the roof, I go for the hour. I don't know if that's true or not, it strikes me that, uh, you vote being presumed or whatever the amendments. Someone will, I appreciate it.
My understanding of the definite postponement takes priority, sir. All those who favor the definite postponement, please give us a say no. All those opposed to the definite postponement?
No.
And definite postponement fans, count them, take the gentleman's article. Arnold, I think, and as amended, the article, article one, the same sentence, repair only. And according to this article, the same sentence repair, repair is twenty-five hundred dollars. Now, all those who favor the, the article, the amendment for twenty-five hundred dollars, the same repair only, please give us a say no.
Aye.
All those?
No.
The article as amended, please. So now we have a motion from the Fed Bank to adopt this article. And it's a moving files for the stabilization account, so we're going to do that as well. Now, all those who take the one hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollar, uh, stabilization fund, uh, finished over the seventy-five dollars, counters please count. All those who against, I will please write as counters please count. Yes, one hundred and six, no, fifteen, maybe the gas one hundred and seven. Article eleven passes. Article twelve, that's the article. Mr. Moderator, the findings being moved to the dog ladder twelve, transfer fifty thousand, eight hundred and eleven from the stabilization fund for the purpose of the article. Okay. Yes, sir.
The moderator, I just working the fifty six five street, I just, I think it was called in the future. I've thought managed to better get the money for the right process to deserve, but I support this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? This again is a transfer, oops. It goes for you.
My case is the only time I need to look over. Can I get some clarification from the police chief as to what the last items and patrolman association on town? I'm not sure who would give you clarification, but what exactly that items?
I can do that for you. The promotional assessment center. Yesterday, the police department anticipated a civil service promotional examination of the grand precinct and tenant. But the funds will be used to provide civil service agency, elevated solo assessment center examination. From eleven tenants and twenty five citizens. Then instead of the, the creative exam. This assessment center will do evaluation of the candidates. Not only by their examination, but based upon knowledge, skill, abilities, personal characteristics. All measured by the assessment center. So the daily test assignment that gets promoted really is on this, this open eye.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Saying all those, uh, rising, this again is a transfer from stabilization fund to the parts of two thousand. Though, I am, I told you, uh, Congress, well, again, I feel more comfortable knowing that. So all of those in favor of our control, please, in the embarrassing numbers, please count. All of the votes are from you, so again, my rights and counts, please count. I see one hundred and one. I'm going to take that as the unanimous vote. Uh, article thirteen. Mr. Moderator, the findings being moved to the dog ladder thirteen, transfer one hundred and forty thousand from stabilization fund for the purpose of the article. And a motion to the, article thirteen, do we have any discussion?
Elizabeth, the young lady, Elaine, Elaine, my question is, who provided the survey?
DBD's staff, what are characters, attend all the parks, high risk, by the way, these parks. And for the town, also residents of, uh, trees that are certainly not built on that. But the other one in the entire community.
Thank you, I have one other question is, um, how many trees will we talk about? For us.